Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Today is our first meeting of a brand-new year, 2023. Today is the 10th of January. The thought for today, you know, we're gonna change that thought for today. The thought for today, we got recognize our Georgia Bulldogs who are
Woo!
Go Dawgs, that's right, who are national champs for the second time in a row, back-to-back champs, and we're excited about that. I know some of you have families and loved ones that attend the University of Georgia. Some of you have family members that are only, actually only 10. So, we're excited about their accomplishments, and we are saluting them tonight. Somebody ought to say, "Go Dawgs."
Go Dawgs!
That's right. We're gonna go ahead and officially call the meeting to order tonight. We are now, we are back. Since we got, COVID is still, still active and alive, but we are actually back bringing pastors to pray for us and pray for our community. Tonight, we have our special guest, our community pastor, Pastor Jason Johnson with the Stewart Community Church. Thank you so much for being here tonight, sir. Not only is he, he's the pastor of Stewart Community Church, but he is also the chaplain of Newton County Fire Department and the director of the facilities here in Newton County. So, thank you for being with us here tonight, sir, and if you would, please pray for us and pray for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to tell the board how much I really appreciate y'all's willingness to always open these meetings with prayer. Romans 12:12 says, "When you hope, be joyful; and when you suffer, be patient; and when you pray, be faithful." So, with that in mind, let's pray. Father God, we come to you tonight in Jesus' name, thanking you for the blessings of this day. We ask that you would grant this board your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, and discernment as they make decisions, Father, to move this county forward in the year 2023. Father, I thank you for their work on our behalf. I pray not only for tonight's meeting, but for all of this year's meetings, Father, that will take place here in this room. Father, in those moments where votes may be difficult, even unpopular, where meetings can become contentious or feelings get hurt, in those moments, would you just move upon our hearts and remind us of your love and your grace, your mercy, and your peace? Father, may your hand of blessing continue to be upon this board, upon the citizens of Newton County, and upon the employees as well? We ask all these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And amen.
Thank you so much, sir. We greatly appreciate you and all that you do here in our community. Next, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sanders if she would to lead us in our pledge tonight.
Our pledge of allegiance is that we are in the United States of America, and we are the leaders of our country, and we are the people of this world.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, we are ready to adopt our agenda. Before we do that, I do want to remove item number 14. I do want to remove item number 14 off the agenda, please. With that being removed, I seek a motion that we approve our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to request item 8A and item 8I on the consent agenda be moved as regular items. The reason being, once the agenda went out, I was contacted by residents who had questions, and because the information was not available for them as far as the cost and where the funding is coming from, I would like just for that to be notified, or just the notice to be, for the residents of the
What number did that say?
That's 8A and 8I, just for transparency for our residents in Newton County.
I have no issues with that. 8A, we want to make that item 12A on the regular agenda. And I think you said 8I?
Uh-huh.
Okay. 8I, we want to make that 12B on the regular agenda. With that being said, Commissioners, I seek a motion to approve the agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 4-0. Thank you. Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please comment this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The next item that we have on the agenda is item number eight, which is our consent agenda.
Let's do the chairman's report and then the county manager's report first.
My apologies, Chairman. You are correct. The next item on the agenda is item number six, the chairman's report.
Thank you. I have some things that I want to bring for the report, but I want to, I want to just say a personally thank you to Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Henderson, definitely Commissioner Henderson, because he been, he was, kept pulling my coat tail about this, and Commissioner Cowan. To you guys, to the county manager, thank you, sir. To the Covetown City Council, to the mayor, Steve Horton. Thank you, guys, for funding the warming, the emergency warming center. You don't know what you did when you did that. You helped so many people, and I am so thankful for you guys for doing that, even though, and I'm not gonna call any municipality out, but I am gonna say, if you care about people, you care about people. You don't leave people out, especially when it's nine degrees outside. So, I thank this board as well as the City of Covetown Council for your actions. That's all I have.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number seven. We will now have our interim county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. We will start off from the county manager's office highlights. Our very own Walker Hughes has been selected to participate in a professional development academy program with NACO. The program identifies high-performing emerging leaders throughout the country. She is one of seven that's represented from our state of Georgia. Program starts January the 9th, and I think it's a great accomplishment for one of our own to be a part of this program, Walker Hughes. Next up, we are planning our new and improved website, which will start on the 31st. Brian has assured me that we'll be ready to roll the 31st. We also like to recognize our Public Works Department. If you notice, throughout the county, we have replaced 195 signs throughout the county through Public Works. Next up, Animal Service. Animal Service had 92 adoptions in December. We also spayed 19 neuter, 19 surgeries were performed in the month of December. Intake remains at 24% higher than it was in 2021. Animal Services responded to seven animal-to-human bite cases in December, and also 271 requests for service. Building Service, they completed a facility inspections, Newton County Fire Services for the additional office space. They completed a facility inspections of an office space located at 1167 Page Street. They continue to work on the media booth in the rear of the boardroom here. They are also interacting with DDS regarding a possible new DDS site here in the county, and they completed 159 service and maintenance requests for December. EMA staff completed 24 hours of continued education. They distributed 25 sleeping carts to multiple warming shelters throughout the county during the extreme cold weather, and their code red registration as of 12/25 is listed above. Businesses 339, residents since 1404, cell phones 1565, notifications via text 1583, notifications via email 484, and weather warming 999. Our Finance Department, they are finalizing our fiscal year 2022 audit. They processed 1627 invoices, issued 927 accounts payable, checks totaling $11,146 purchase, 46 purchase orders, and they processed 1727 payroll checks, and they deposited over $6.6 million in revenue for the month of December. Our Fire Services for the month of December, 33 fires, 318 rescue and EMS calls, 18 hazardous condition calls, 97 service calls, 135 good-intent calls, 61 false alarm calls and false calls, three severe weather and natural disaster calls, and two special incident calls, with a total of 688 calls in the month of December at 100% response rate. Our GIS processed eight map requests. They also nine, I'm sorry, processed several phone calls through the month, and with the new political district maps were updated on our website. Our HR department onboarded eight new employees. They offboarded six employees. They hosted 325 employees at the Newton County Annual Holiday Luncheon. They also held workers' contract property casualty insurance training for 40 employees, which is very helpful for our organization. We also very appreciative of this board for the $500 holiday incentive, and Newton County represented, they were represented at the Georgia Department of Labor Job Fair, which we are being more present at different job fairs, trying to identify new candidates for our county. They also provided flu and the COVID-19 vaccine to 58 employees over four locations during that particular month. Information Services, our employees continue to be trained on various things that could impact our infrastructure. They continue the deployment of multi-factor authorization for email, and they continue the configuration for what we have here, the new computers for the BLC. Our Juvenile Court, they processed seven, seven delinquency complaints, and they served 35 walk-ins. They also had their stakeholder meeting that was held in December for the youth and families in our county. Judge Branch also had six court dates here, 14 dependency cases, and Judge Edgar had seven court dates here, 20 cases. And also, we want to note, no children were taken in foster care. Parks and Recreation, we started our youth and adult basketball practice in December. We hosted an event with Santa for over 220 families. Our LED lights were installed at Turner Lake. 23,000 citizens visited the Recreation Center, and 770 paying members attended Recreation Center activities. PIO, they had 70 new following in the month of December using our social media platforms. The top contents for the month of December were the condolences for one of our county employees who passed the warming shelter opening, as well as our cold weather notice. And we're continuing the improvement in our boardroom with some things you see here now with the monitors, with the monitors here, as well as the rollout of our website. Public Works, they completed the Splosh patching in Bailey-Glynn subdivision, trash pickup for the month of December, 3285 bags, 17.98 tons were taken to our landfill, and the sheriff's trash detail picked up 93 bags. And our Senior Services, they did a great job this holiday season. 52 seniors attended the performance at the Port of Sanford Performing Arts Center. Forty-two seniors participated in a day trip at Hammerick, South Carolina, as well as the annual senior center Christmas luncheon was held on the 15th and the 16th, which we had over 200 participants, as well as the seniors, they were closed for the holidays. And our Solid Waste, they submitted their five-year update for the design and operation plan, as well as 400 mattresses and box springs were received at the landfill. We had a total of 5,482 convenience center hang tags for 2022. Transportation, all of our runaway acquired for the Davis-Fort Groving paving project, and we also are starting our 2023 LMEG resurfacing projects. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our December report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
A little bit new, I'm trying to figure out which one. First of all, I think the monitors look good, but could we, in the county manager's report, give a report on Nelson Heights? It's been the little bit of work that we did with a little bit of, I think, Splosh money 2017, I think $150,000 for a pavilion, and it's been on the books to be done now, I think, almost three years. And I would like for, hopefully now, we can give an update on that up until the work actually gets done, because my constituents asked me, said, "Well, why we can't get some as, they feel as small of a pavilion done?" And I said, "Well, maybe it's taking a little while, because we're spending $150,000 to do a pavilion." But nevertheless, I think that we need a report on that and the other work that has been offered up to Nelson Heights Community Center. So, do you have anything that you can tell us now a little bit about when the work might start on, on update?
Commissioner Henderson, is that for item Nelson Heights update, is that what comes before you open night? Can you talk about that?
Well, one last question, just for my information purposes only, just for me. And I thought we had approved it a little bit before you came on for that particular work to be done, and I don't know why we keep getting, and we only had one bidder, one person bid on it, so I don't, I don't see why we're just dragging it out. Thank you.
Next, we have item number eight, our consent agenda. Well, before I seek a motion, I've got some people I want to thank, thank for their service. District One, Ms. Ann Knight, Board of Appeals, are you here tonight? Ms. Ann Knight. District Three, Mr. Ronnie Glover, are you here tonight? District Four, Pastor Terry Shepherd, are you here tonight? Thank you so much, sir, for your service. Thank you for being willing to serve our community. Thank you. And also tonight, Mr. Cowan, be appointed to vice chair. With that being said, I seek a motion that we approve our consent agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 4-0. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number nine, appointment to the Newton County Board of Elections Chairman's Position.
Thank you. Appointment to the Newton County Board of Elections, I think they have asked that Mr., wow, that Mr. Phil Johnson be a, remain as the chairman of the Board of Elections. Someone would have to make that into form of motion.
Could you repeat that for me, please, sir?
The Board of Elections is asking that Mr. Phil Johnson remain as the chairman of the Board of Elections. So, move.
Start.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? I just want to take a quick moment to say that our Board of Elections had did a great job. We just lost Ms. Connie Smith, who's the daughter of Pastor Willie James Smith. Thank you, sir. Mr. Willie James Smith, she was with the county for about five years and did an excellent job, and they doing a great job in elections over there. With all that said, all in favor? It passes 5-0. I mean, 4-0, I'm sorry.
Chairman, the next item we have is number 9A, Appointment to the Newton County Board of Elections Republican Representative.
Thank you. The Republican Party has submitted a list of names. I'm sure they had got with one of the representative, you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yet, at this time, we'd like to nominate or make a motion to approve Kim Payne as the Republican nominee of that board.
Start.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan that Kim Payne be the representative. We thank Dustin, I think it's Thompson, thank Dustin Thompson for his service. He decided he no longer wanted to serve, so we're grateful for his service, and discussion, Commissioner.
I just want to ask my good friend, Commissioner Edwards, if he could tell me just a little bit about Mr. Payne. I mean, I'm gonna vote for him, I just don't know him that well.
She is a resident of Of course, a resident of Newton County, and I believe, yeah, she is a member, a resident of District One. She had been serving on the Animal Control Board as my representative, and came to me a couple months back when it became apparent that Dustin was not gonna repeat and ask if I would support her for this position. I told her I would, so, kind of what we are. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. All in favor? It passes 4-0. Thank you.
Chairman, the next item we have is item number 10, the Appointment of the Interim County Manager.
Thank you. We are here tonight to ask for a motion for the reappointment of the county, the interim county manager.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders.
What are the terms? Is it for another year? There was nothing, actually?
The remainder of his contract.
So, just for the remainder of the three months?
Yeah.
So, I don't want to say I want to table it, but I don't want us to make the same mistake we made last time, because we didn't have anything in place on how we're going to appoint the county manager. We know that there are people who applied for the position, and I'm not sure, I'm not aware if that has started, or if we have done the interviews yet. So, I would like to know the process of what's, how this is going to occur, because I don't want us to make the mistakes we made last time. We didn't do everything in a timely manner, which caused issues. So, I would like us to do that in a timely manner, at least have something in place to where we know what's the process going forward, because this is a temporary position. So, we're looking forward to appoint our permanent county manager, and hopefully we'll be interviewing those who actually apply for the position as well. And I know our interim also applied as well.
We will, we will be interviewing those that apply for the position. Tonight, it's to reappoint Mr. Sims to the remainder of his contract, and yes, he did apply for the permanent county manager position, and those interviews will start here real soon. Yep.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Sims for the duration of this contract.
Yep.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Sims to, through the duration of this contract.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any more discussion?
And the duration ends in March.
March. All in favor? Thank you. It passes 4-0.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 11, the Appointment of the County Manager. I apologize, the Appointment of the County Attorney, item number 11.
Thank you. Also, Gerard and Davis, I guess I'm, you want to do this? You want to do it? You want to do it? I got it. Also, Gerard and Davis is, have another, have another six months remaining on their contract, so we will be asking that we reappoint Gerard and Davis for the remainder of their contract as well. Now, go ahead. Commissioner Sanders, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. My question again, I know you guys, before I came on board, voted to go to in-house attorney. So, what would be our process for that? Because constituents have been asking, what do we plan on doing in regards to that? I know we're voting for the six months, but I just want to make sure that we speak on our moving forward towards that in-house attorney position that you all voted for. Was that 2017?
I think somewhere around it.
Yeah, yeah. So, let me take it. I'll take it. So, we have, it's been open for quite some time now, and last time I checked, we're human resources.
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you for that question, Commissioner Sanders. Yes, that position has been open for quite a length of time. We have received very, very few applications for the county attorney position at this point. From the HR Director, we're still trying to be creative as far as our reach, but at this current time, we've received very few qualified candidates for the position.
Is it, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
Do you happen to know what the salary range is for that position? Because sometimes salary does constitute a great, having a good employee or candidate. Can we mention it? I'm not sure.
No, we can't. Right now, I think the salary, if Amanda, if, I'm sorry, if the director's shoemaker didn't, if it hadn't been moved up, it's at 100, I think, 185,000.
That is correct. Okay.
And I will add, she has it posted, I mean, everywhere, and so
Correct.
Yeah.
It's been posted several places.
So, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, I'm glad these monitors, but there I can't, I have to raise my hand way up high to say, "Hey!" I know at one point, we were looking at the county manager position and the attorney's position. I think, I think running Commissioner Cowan was counting in on the interviews, or a commissioner was in on it of some sort. Am I making any sense here? Because I thought one or two of the commissioners were supposed to be in on the interviews and stuff like that, and kind of keeping up as far as what was going on, to be sure that we got the information as far as who we were, who we were looking at in possibly hiring. So, who might be doing that if we are doing that?
You want to explain? You got it? Okay.
So, the, the county's charter, for lack of a better word, specifies the manner in which you select your county manager, and it's very clear that the initial selection process, or the, sort of the selection of potential candidates rests with the chair. The chair then nominates to the full ward candidate, finalists candidates that you then select from. So, that's the, that's the same process that you'll go through.
Correct. That was not exactly what I was asking. What I was asking, is there a commissioner counting in on the interviews? A commissioner can be in on interviews. I think in one part, and I think Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Cowan was in on the interviews, or should have been on the interviews, when those candidates were looked at before they came back to us, the board, if I'm not mistaken. And so, the question that I'm asking, do we still have a commissioner? Either Commissioner Cowan, or Commissioner Edwards, or Commissioner Sanders? A commissioner in on, on those particular A commissioner in on, on those particular interviews? It's not to disrupt anything, it's just so that we have somebody on the board maybe in on the meetings. I think we had did that before like that. And one, and one last thing, question to ask, I think, time that we talked about the amount of money that we were giving to Gerard and Davis, which was about sixty thousand, I said sixty thousand dollars, now I don't know what it is, I'm pretty sure. We, I'm sorry, six hundred thousand. I stand, thank Commissioner Sanders, six hundred thousand. So where we at as far as, as using Gerard and Davis, as far as money wise too, I think? Since we kinda talking about it, we need, I could ask that particular question, I think.
I don't know the exact number as I sit here, but I can tell you that we are, the, the, when we were, when our fees were renewed about six months ago, they were capped on an annual basis to be no more than, it was either six hundred or six hundred and fifty thousand.
Six hundred.
And we're substantially under that right now. That six hundred thousand did not include litigation, which none of us have any control over. But we, even including litigation, we're still, we're on target to be just under that number right now.
And I can add, we as far as staff, myself and the Finance Director are looking at all of our department budgets and ensuring that they are on budget or below budget. We're having a mid-year budget review next week.
Correct, correct. And we appreciate, we thank you for it too. So is that, under that six hundred thousand, is that for this year?
It's, yes, for FY twenty twenty-three.
For the fiscal year.
If we could find somebody, an in-house attorney, I think at a hundred and eighty-five, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, there would be a significant savings, I think, to the taxpayers of Newton County, if we could find somebody. Or maybe, I think we need to start talking and looking local. I think there's a lot of, in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, good attorneys here in Covington. You know, people pay their taxes, spend their money local, and they should be afforded the opportunity to be a lawyer for us up here too as well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
I just wanna clarify, because I think we kinda had a misunderstanding. Commissioner Henderson was talking about the county attorney position, not the county manager. So on the enable legislation, there is not a list of who can be a part of that. Any commission, there's, it's not even laid out to say there, that the chairman position has to do that interview. Commissioners could be a part of it. So it's not structured on the enable legislation for the position of the county attorney, only for the county manager. So I wanna make sure we clarify that, because it was mentioned that that had to be a certain person doing that. So it's not on our enable legislation.
Just one last follow-up question to do with Mr. Chairman. And it is, even with the county manager, please correct me if I'm wrong, he is appointed by the board to as well, no matter who he is. And the question that I was, had asked and never to get answered, was even on the county manager, there, was he not present? Commissioner Cowan on one of those, of some of those interviews, it's somebody I thought I would recollect. Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve, the Appointment of the County...
Hold on one second. So much discussion. We need a, we need to vote.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Cowan just made the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Gerard and Davis through the terms of their, duration of their original contract.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passed three... It passed three one, one extension. You wanna state the reason why?
I think, you know, I know that we had looked awful hard at our former county attorney, Megan, you know, which is out of the picture. And it seems as if, part of the way, we always in agreement to a certain extent of her. And once she moved on, we still, we still have Gerard and Davis. In which, myself personally, I think that we are spending too much money, I don't care what we, what you say, or how we raise our hand. I think six hundred thousand dollars is too much, especially when you can find a good attorney for at least half of that, or maybe a little bit less than that. And who could help us out significantly. And I'm just gonna say it, myself personally, I just haven't been, I just haven't been with overhaul service. And I've been there for a while that Gerard and Davis has given us. And if anybody wanna know the exact reason why, you just call me or stop me and I'll tell you.
Oh, it blew the screen? Oh, okay, man. Thank you. Thank you.
Not gonna be long, Mr. Chairman, I promise. I, my vote was to complete the duration of the contract, because we have to have an attorney in place. We cannot move forward without an attorney in place. But I am in agreement that during this duration, we due to be looking, or whatever we have to, to seek that in-house attorney to save our county funding.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman, we are at item number twelve, the Appointment of the County Clerk.
Seek a motion.
I got that one, yes. I'd like to make a motion, motion to reappoint Ms. Jackie Smith as our county clerk.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. You know, over the years, I think Ms. Jackie, she started as a county clerk, as the head county clerk. She was always working for the county when I first came here. And you can't find a better clerk in the state of Georgia, in my own personal, in the state, in anywhere, in the United States or in the world. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say this, you know, as a Christian, I love her because she's really good and give me good advice. And I count on her family's been somewhat my family too as well. And we mourn the passing of Mr. Buck, her husband. And we've just been constantly praying, and we ask that, we just, everybody's prayed and continue to help uphold her up in prayer. As she's been going through a whole lot, from the burn down of her home. And so just continue to pray for her. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? Thank you. It, it passed three one, one to sixty-one statewide.
I do agree that Ms. Jackie is, has been doing great in her position, but I do also see that Ms. Nolly has to take up a lot of the slack. I know there's a lot that's going on, but in my three years being here, I have seen various things. So that was my reason last year, was to make sure that we had help also for Ms. Nolly, when Ms. Jackie cannot be here. And that was the reason why I said we should go in executive session to discuss, because there are some times where Ms. Nolly takes up a lot of the slack.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve A, Time Sensitive Issue. Board of Commissioners Fire Services to Ratify Commercial Purchase and Sales Agreement for the property located at forty-one forty-six Highway two seventy-eight, Covington, Georgia for fire services.
Mr. Patrick.
Board, you will recall at executive session at the last meeting, you authorized the county to enter into a contract purchase the property at forty-one forty-six Highway two seventy-eight for an amount, for an amount, I looked at that. We were able to negotiate the purchase price at six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. There were some strings attached to that, which included closing prior to the end of the year, which were planned, and we just need the board to ratify the agreement that you authorized in the executive session. I understand there's some questions about source of funding and such as that. I generally tell you that these funds came from your fire insurance premium, but I don't wanna go into, I don't wanna speak out of my place.
Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct. Patrick, the funds were received from the fire service insurance.
And Georgia law requires those funds to be spent for fire services.
For fire, yes.
It was six hundred thirty-five thousand, yes, yes.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Now, can I get a second? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes four oh.
Chairman, the next item we have is item number twelve B, Public Works Seeking Approval to Purchase Twenty Twenty-two Broom Sweeper from Tractor and Equipment Company. Costs seventy-nine thousand. The funding source is ARPA.
Mr. Sims.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular item, the broom sweeper for our Public Works Department, the board approved us to utilize some ARPA funding to address some critical infrastructure needs within our organization. And this is one of those purchases for our Public Works Department, purchasing the broom sweeper at a cost of seventy-nine thousand dollars. It did go through our procurement department, which was properly procured. We are seeking the board's approval to purchase this item.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second, I mean, been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh.
Mr. Chair, we are at item number thirteen, Seeking Approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement, the IGA, between Newton County, Georgia and the City of Covington. Amendment to the IGA for Lease of William Street Water Treatment Facility. It's dated July twenty-first, twenty-twenty. And our presenter is our director, Mr. James Brown.
Mr. Brown, if you don't mind, sir, could you step just a little closer? So, so all of you who don't know, this is, he is the biggest Georgia Tech fan it is in the state of Georgia. And we have a Georgia mat up here for you to step on. So if you don't mind, can you come a little closer, sir? Oh, thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely. This is an agreement that we seek an approval to, go into an agreement with the City of Covington to, as you previously may remember, that we came, I came before you, that we have a plan for the William Street facility. This agreement would allow us to move forward with that plan. We will come back to you with the appro, the Jifa approval, probably in a month or so. We have some clerical things that we have to straighten out, but this is the first, first opportunity for us to get this approved.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, guys, I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know, I thought I was the biggest Georgia Tech fan, because my son graduated from Georgia Tech. And I had to go there for four years and go to all those games. And, you know, and a few beatdowns. But I think at the end, he received his degree, and he's continued education. Now he's, he's at COVID, a defensive coach. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is being presented by Ms. Trudy Henry, the Director of the Covington, Newton County nine-one-one, Seeking Approval of Change Order Number zero zero seven with Motorola and Change Order Number zero zero three with TUSA.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here tonight.
So I have two change orders. The first one is with Motorola for the public safety radio system. The change order has basically, it just extends the project six more months. The contract requires radio testing to be done during full foliage. There is no full foliage right now, so we're gonna have to wait until May to get that done. During that negotiation, we also negotiated a few other things. Motorola has agreed to take fifty thousand dollars off the final payment in order for us to extend our TUSA contract, which is our radio consultant. So to add them, or to extend their contract for six more months also, their price is gonna be fifty thousand dollars. So with that, Motorola is basically covering that cost. So I have those two change orders just to extend.
So it's, it's on the agenda as really one, so let's, can you, can you tell us about the other one, so we can just get one motion?
Okay, so the first change order is Motorola's, to extend their contract for six months to encompass that full foliage testing.
Okay. And the second one?
The second one is for TUSA, to extend six months, because we extended the radio project.
Okay.
TUSA, the radio consultants would have to continue on along with the project. So it's to extend their contract for six months as well.
I got you.
And Motorola is reducing by fifty thousand their contract price, so that fifty thousand can be used to pay TUSA consultant. So it's a net wash to the county as far as costs.
Thank you so much. I seek a motion, please. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
Mr. Chairman, we are at item number sixteen, Presented by Mr. Dwayne Mas, Director of the Recreation Center, Seeking Approval for RJB and Associates Contractors Incorporated Contract Change Order for Nelson Heights Bathroom and Pavilion in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars, making the total contract price to two hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. The funding source is ARPA, and it, yes, it is budgeted.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Happy New Year. So, and I'll kinda do an update, Commissioner, with everything out here. So when I first brought this to the board back in probably late summer, we originally bid this out, it was restrooms and pavilion. So when the prices come back, it was more than we had, so we took the restrooms off and done the pavilion, which the pavilion would take care of the rest of the two thousand seventeen District Four Splot money. So this board approved one hundred fifty thousand ARPA funds to go back and add the restrooms. So Rainya reached out to Mr. Rogers, who is the only bidder we had, and he came back and bid on the restrooms. So that's where we at. And he is supposed to start on restrooms Friday, just with holidays and everything, not restrooms, I'm sorry, pavilion. Holidays and all, he just has some issues getting permits. So that's what we're seeking approval for tonight, is to be able to move forward with the restrooms also.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please.
So moved is stated by Mr. Dwayne Mas.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. What is the estimated date of completion?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that. The pavilion's gonna move fairly quickly. There's a good chance it'll rain Thursday, so it may be next week when it gets started, but it'll move pretty, pretty quick. Restrooms will take a little bit longer. I mean, I hate to guess, but I would say by end of March, pavilion should be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Mr. Sims.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add, Commissioner Henderson, one of the things that Director Mas indicated to me was the cost went up initially, and that was one of the reasons, the cost of the delay. And then at this particular time, we were able to add in, because they received the ARPA funding, the restrooms. And that's where you were able to get both of those projects completed at this time.
Yes, you, you want, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you want to say, correct? And I know prices are high, but just a simple, in my opinion, you know, I know a building, pavilion, same size of the one that's beside the building, twenty-five, thirty thousand, hundred fifty thousand dollars is, is I think. I mean, I know stuff that went up, but has it went up dead high? I guess that's a big question. And then the thing that concerned me, as I stated earlier, it was the fact that it was just only one bid. You know, and, and there were, and there were no local or... You know, and, um, and there were, and there were no, um, local or no local bidders, you know. That was the only thing that, you know, that I was, I was looking at.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number seventeen, presented by Mr. Greg Mann, our Director of IT. Information Services seeking approval for a secondary internet connection for cloud data backup. Cost eighteen hundred dollars a month, a one-time installation fee of a thousand dollars, and the funding source is fiscal year twenty-three Information Services Budget.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Seeking approval for an agreement with the City of Covington to provide us a secondary internet connection to be used strictly for cloud data backup and also to provide a private or dark fiber connection between the admin building where the data center is and the judicial center to expand our local backup capabilities. This ties to, uh, item D on our strategic plan.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, um, Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we are at item number eighteen, presented by Chief Mike Connor. Fire Services seeking approval to order four pumper apparatuses and two tankers. The cost is four million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents. The, the funding source will be SLOSH twenty twenty-three, and yes, it's budgeted.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. What we're, uh, seeking is approval to go ahead and enter into a contract purchase some, um, needed, um, fire vehicles, i.e. it's gonna be four pumpers and two tenders to provide fire services to citizens here in the county. There's a, well, the build times went up on these trucks from twenty-six to twenty-eight months to thirty to thirty-four months. We're looking at a three-year build time. I've been working with Ms. White in finance. Uh, these were approved in the, uh, SLOSH in November, uh, but with the build time, we'd like to go ahead and place an order for the vehicles so that, uh, we do not have to pay for these vehicles until they're delivered. So we're looking at, uh, three years of collections into the SLOSH, uh, before we would have to pay for them.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, Commissioner? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, we are at item number nineteen, which is our alcohol license readings. Should I proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number nineteen, our first reading, Walgreens, number one-two-six-two-one, twelve-nine-five-five, Brownbridge Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. The applicant is Clayton Schmidt.
Thank you. First reading.
The next item is number twenty. First reading, Flash Foods Circle K, forty-one-seventy-five Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. Licensee, Misty Wilson for District Two.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is item twenty-one. Commissioner Sanders.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the final reading of Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC on Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three thousand and sixteen, sixteen. Licensee is Bastet. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Cross in District Three.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a second, please? Who's that? Commissioner? It's been, uh, motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes three oh. Thank you.
Chairman, the next item we have is the final reading for District Two, Commissioner Mason. Final reading, Family Dollar Stores of Georgia LLC, Family Dollar Store number three-one-seven-one-four, thirty-two fifty, Highway eighty-one, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. The licensee is Joy Robinson.
Can I get a motion, please? Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes four oh.
Chairman, we have item number twenty-three, the final reading for District Two, Commissioner Mason. Final reading, Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC, CVS Pharmacy number one-three-five-nine, fifty-three-eight-four, Highway twenty, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. The licensee, Misty Kite.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It's staying passed. It passes four oh.
Chairman, we're at number twenty-four, final reading for District Two, Commissioner Mason. Walmart Stores East, number four-five-five-eight, forty-two hundred Salem Road. Licensee Danielle Forni.
Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh.
Mr. Chairman, we're at number twenty-five, which is located on page eighty-one of the agenda packet. It's for twenty twenty-three, all alcohol renewal listings.
Thank you. Commissioners, you had opportunity to look at the, the alcohol renewal listings. I seek a motion of approval, please.
Motion approved, twenty twenty-three alcohol renewal list.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Um, Commissioner, um, Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is it safe to assume that we have no violations where everybody's up, up to?
Mr. Sims.
That would be a correct assumption, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you. Next is item twenty-six, Citizens Comments. This is an opportunity where we allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. You may come at this time.
Barbara Morgan, twenty-one fifty-eight East Street, Covington. The headline in the Newton Citizen says Newton County receives a award. But I just want to make sure that Brittany White, our Finance Director, and her staff get public accolades for the national award that they have won, continuing the string of awards that they have won since twenty eighteen. They, Newton County has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The award was given to Newton County for its annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And again, we have received this every year since twenty eighteen. And you as Chair and Jarvis Sims both commented on the excellent work that Brittany and her staff have done. Your comment said, "We strive to provide transparency in all that we do, and this ties directly into our strategic plan of cultivating a, a culture of trust with our residents." And as the news article notes, people can go to the Newton County website and read about the award, but Brittany White and her staff really deserve accolades.
Thank you. I do want to state that, um, Mr. Sims is going to recognize Brittany, but he wanted to make sure she was here. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight. Uh, so hopefully she'll be at the next Board meeting, but they are doing a great job. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Archer Shepherd, nine-one-six-nine Village, I have Covington, Georgia.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, believe it or not, some of the citizens, senior citizens do read the newspaper, and they've been trying to find out about the opera form that they read in the newspaper that, uh, you will be given a, a gift card for them to get to, uh, booster shot. Well, they're gonna be over to the center again giving those shots out. So they thinking that after, and when, when, when you get around to awarding those, uh, gift cards, everybody be done got a shot. So they'll be, are you gonna react, do that reactivation of what? You know, because they're not gonna get anything, all of them be done got the shots. The other thing they're gonna find out about is, uh, the fifteen thousand dollars that if the cit, citizen will, uh, qualify for, you know, to get, get the help on the housing thing. So, uh, they keep putting it in the newspaper, but ain't nothing come from y'all. So what are y'all gonna do? What are y'all gonna start doing that? Because y'all been giving dates. Uh, I don't know whether y'all been giving dates, but the Covington news have been saying that it's gonna happen. So they wanna find out when it's gonna happen. So if you could let them know sometime soon what, what you gonna do about it, they certainly will appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two, Covington. I rise to let you guys know that we are planning on doing a cemetery cleanup this year. I missed the meeting in November to notify you all, and I tried my best to talk with Brian and talk to No Walker, uh, like, the other week, uh, trying to see if I could get in and let you guys know. But anyway, we're planning on doing a cemetery cleanup, uh, uh, this, this year. Ms. Molly, Molly, uh, Molly Mayer and, uh, Laura Berchem, you know, have been contacting with me. Uh, and I was over on yesterday, uh, seeing how many volunteers they can get from the schools. So we don't have a count just yet, but we are gonna, we gonna do it if we have to. Don't have but two people, you know. But we're gonna be meeting at the, uh, Newton County High School. We're gonna be leaving there at ten o'clock in the morning, you know, on, on the sixteenth. That's next, that's next, next Monday. And we're gonna, we're gonna, we got, got, uh, three cemeteries that, uh, earmarked to, to work on. Now, if we can't do them all that day, we're gonna get them finished some kind of way. But the, the cemetery is, uh, it's one down on, uh, two thirteen Santee Bluff subdivision, so the cemetery in there that had been neglected for years. So I wanna go in there and work a little bit on that one. And we're also gonna get around to doing Poplar Hills Cemetery. And I talked with some of, well, one of the members there, and they're gonna let us, uh, use the, uh, fellowship hall for feeding and using the restroom. So we'll do the best, do the best we can. That's all we can do. And there's another one that had been, uh, mentioned to me, and I went down and took a look at it. It's down at Mansfield School in the back of the playground there at Mansfield School. So we're gonna do a little, little work on that one. And Sheriff Brown, he, uh, as usual, he, he, uh, consented to help out with the, uh, with the food. I mean, we can't just work these people for nothing. We gotta give them something, some food and some water, whatever. So I'm asking you, the Board, uh, Mr. Cowan already, uh, promised me a donation tonight, and, uh, ask you, ask the rest of you, you know, if you would, we appreciate it, uh, you know, and everything. So other than that, uh, if you don't have anything else to do, come on out to the high school. You know, like, uh, Dr. King used to say, uh, day on instead of day off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I just want to say I look forward to a productive twenty twenty-three and look forward to working with the other Board members to make it a productive twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Some announcements. On January twenty-first, we're gonna have one P.M. at Turner Lake. We're gonna have our Vision Board Party. It was rescheduled because of the runoff election. So a lot of the residents said we did not want to cancel it. They want to reschedule to write their visions out for the entire year. So we are gonna come together, create our vision boards for twenty twenty-three. On March fourth at eleven A.M., we're gonna have the Newton Community Health and Wellness Fair, where some fitness instructors are gonna come out to Turner Lake, as well as nutrition and, uh, specialists and so forth, gonna talk about health and wellness on that day. Um, I also want to thank the residents of District Three, who assisted me with the congressional grant with Congressman Hank Johnson. If it wasn't for you writing your letters to our Congressman, uh, recently, I think it was December twenty-second, twenty-third, uh, I received information and actually got notified by the media. I didn't even know it passed through the House and Senate that we were awarded four million dollars to build the West Side Youth Facility from our Congressman Hank Johnson. So I want to congratulate the residents of District Three and thank you because you are, your letters for writing a part of that grant, we actually received the largest grant from the congressional district. So thank you so much for that. Um, I just want to speak a little bit on some information, and it's kind of a little hard to speak about, but I have to speak about it. Um, recently, working with, um, speaking on the West Side Youth Facility, uh, some information was leaked. And I did seek with our county attorney when things are discussed in executive session, how is that handled? A Commissioner even agreed that he actually spoke to four of, of subdivisions in my district to provide information to them that was land acquisition that should have not been leaked to the public. Upon, uh, with that discussion, it got aggressive to where that Commissioner, now, we, we, we have words. You guys have seen us up here have words go back and forth. But when you get to the point where you want to fight someone and use your hands to fight them, and other grown men have to pull them off to fight you, that's ridiculous. And I will defend myself with the law. So I just want to make that aware, that if you cannot use your words and you have to use your hands and your body, and you can't use your words, that's a problem. Thank you so much.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as, uh, as most of us are, we are aware that black history is right around the corner. And, and been a lifelong resident here in Newton County, you know, we just haven't, in my opinion, celebrated black history the way that we should have, at least recognizing it. And, um, we never do have a organized, uh, black history program talking about the peoples who have really did great things in our county, such as, uh, Forrest Sawyer, such as, um, Miss Donna Pace, Miss Donna Pace, um, Donna Watts Pace, uh, who was a slave. And a lot of people here in this community, they helped made it what it is. And I was asked by my grandson, and I'm, when I'm closing, he said, Dad, see all these old pictures of, of the old guys, of people of color who were sitting on the wagons? And say, you know, and I said, yeah, more than likely, they probably was, they probably was a slave. I said, but nevertheless, they helped build this beautiful county, this beautiful county that we do have. And I told him, in order to know where you, where you're going, you got to know where you came from. And so I'm just gonna leave you us with that. Is that, that's all we're together, make sure that all of our history is preserved for our future generations.
Um, Commissioner Cowan.
Guys, before I close out, I'm gonna say, first congratulate, um, Commissioner Henderson on his, um, reelection, him and Commissioner Mason, who's not here. Uh, but I do want to say again, I can't put enough emphasis on the fact that, um, you guys, uh, stepped up to the plate and provided funds, um, for that woman, um, for the emergency woman shelter and the City of Covington as well. I think I see, uh, Ms. Councilman Davis over there, I think. Yeah, that is. Thank you guys so much for what you did as well. Guys, we, we had a, the City of Social Circle, um, they had a whole subdivision that was, that lost power, and they were seeking a place for their citizens to go. By the time they contacted us, thank God that, uh, that the power hat came back on right after they contacted us. Uh, but it's needed. So again, I thank all of you. Uh, Mr. Sims, want to give a quick update on the ARPA funds?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just providing a quick update, we will have a presentation at our next Board meeting, which is next Tuesday, to provide our citizens updates on our ARPA funds, as well as some of the upcoming projects that we have that will as well as some of the upcoming projects that we have that will be utilizing ARPA funds.
Thank you so much. Guys, if nothing else, I seek a motion that we adjourn. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. All in favor?